Are we ready? Ready to start? Because we've got, it's five fifteen. Hi, you were here anyway. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for the city of Alameda. Tonight is Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and we are about to go into closed session. And so I would like to call this meeting to order, and we'll start with the roll call. Madam Clerk, Laura Weisenger, would you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
Dayceug.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor, Azia Ashcroft.
Here.
Four present, and hopefully Councilmember Jensen will be here shortly.
Perfect. So first up is the consent calendar. It's a routine item. Will be approved by one motion unless removed by council members. This is not something you would remove. And this is just the, why don't you tell us what this is, Madam Clerk?
Okay, so this is just one item to designate the negotiators for building ninety-two.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Pryor.
He's so moved.
Seconded by Councilmember Bowler. That's what I thought. Maybe even use the microphone. And all those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on the closed session items?
We do not.
All right. With that, we're going to adjourn into closed session to consider three items. And the clerk will please introduce those items.
Four A is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code section five four nine five six point eight. The property is six fifty West Ranger Avenue, building ninety-two at Alameda Point. City negotiators are the city manager, economic development director, assistant city attorney, and tenant Anderson from Cushman and Wakefield. The negotiating parties are the city of Alameda, Alameda Point Redevelopers, Best Bay Apartments, Inc., DBA Reyes Capital, and SM Earns Development Partners. Under negotiation are price and terms of sale. Four B is conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Committee Code section five four nine five six point nine. The case name is Purdue Sackler versus Alvegin Nationwide Opiate Litigation. Courts are United States Bankruptcy Court for the Southern District of New York and the United States Court Northern District of Ohio. The case numbers are nineteen BK, two three six four nine, and one seventeen MD, two eight oh four. Four C is conference with legal counsel potential litigation, potential initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code section five four nine five six point nine subdivision D. Four, number of cases is one, with the city issuing litigation, legal action as plaintiff. The potential defendant is Astra Space.
Perfect, thank you. And so with that, we're going to adjourn into closed session. We have every intention of being back here at seven PM to start the regular meeting. Okay, with that, we'll see everybody involved in item four A to please come back to the closed session. And anyone who's staying here, we might want to just lower the shades to keep the sun from beating in. Nine. All right. Yeah, oh, it got so quiet. Okay, can we call this meeting to order? Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Alameda City Council meeting for, this is Tuesday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the council has recently returned from closed session, right on time, I might add. And so I would like to ask City Clerk Laura Weisenger to please announce any action taken in closed session.
So the first item, item four A, was conference with real property negotiators for building ninety-two at Alameda Point. Staff provided information and council provided direction, which was approved unanimously by five ayes. For item four B, which was conference with legal counsel existing litigation for two opiate cases, staff provided information and council provided direction also unanimously by five ayes. And four C was potential litigation with the city initiating little, like, legal action against, potentially against Astra Space, and staff provided information and council provided direction also unanimously by five ayes.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the special closed. We will adjourn the special closed session, and we will call to order, I will call to order, the regular meeting of the City Council. Madam Clerk could, no, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to ask Vice Mayor Michelle Pryor if she would leave the pledge.
All right, please rise if you are able. All right, ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Pryor. And now may we have the roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Bowler.
Here.
Dayceug.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Pryor.
Here.
Mayor, Azia Ashcroft.
Present.
Five present.
All right, thank you. And so we move next to the consent calendar. And these are routine items that will be approved by one motion unless council members remove an item for discussion. Removed items are called after the regular agenda is finished. And council members may speak for up to three minutes on the consent calendar. So first off, council, are there any items on the consent calendar that anyone wants to pull? Seeing none. Does council have any questions on any of the consent calendar items, Vice Mayor Pryor?
Yeah, there are two consent calendar items, five D and.
Oh, do you know what? I'm so sorry. I didn't do that well. This is, we are on actually the special meeting, sorry, my bad. This is the special meeting of the successor agency to the Community Improvement Commission. It used to be known as the redevelopment agency. We serve, and this is probably where we're also commissioners. That's why it said commissioners in there. Okay, so we, that's what we're hearing. This is actually two A of the consent calendar is the minutes of our last meeting, recommendation to approve the city investment policy. I'm thinking we might have a speaker, and recommendation to accept investment transactions report and annual investment report. So were your questions on the next consent calendar?
They were, so I take back mine.
That's okay. I'll call on you then. So, Councilmember Jensen.
I actually have a comment or.
Sure, go for it.
On the SACIC consent calendar on item two B, the recommendation to approve the city of Alameda investment policy. And this is an update. I just wanted to comment and thank our treasurer, that city of Alameda treasurer, Kevin Kennedy, who I worked with last year, to update the investment policy that's now posted online to pull our investments in industries that are involved in the production of manufacturing of tobacco, gambling, fossil fuels, and weapons of any kind. So I want to point that out. Thank treasurer Kennedy, and that was my only comment.
Certainly. I think maybe the whole council worked on that, but thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any, okay, so those were council questions. Do we have any public comment? We don't? Okay, any council comments beyond what we've heard? Well then, we're just looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar for this successor agency. Moved by, approval moved by Councilmember Dayceug, seconded by Vice Mayor Pryor. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, seeing none. That measure passes unanimously. So we will adjourn the successor agency special meeting, and we will move on to the regular City Council meeting. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call has been noted. Five present.
Thank you. Are there any agenda changes?
There are none.
All right. And we don't have any proclamations or special orders of the date today. So we'll move on to item number four, which is oral communication, non-agenda items. You need to be present in the room to speak on this item, and you, speakers may address the council in regard to any matter that is not on the agenda, over which the council has jurisdiction. And we'll take fifteen minutes now at the top of the agenda for in-person comments only. If there are more speakers left, we will have another opportunity to speak at the end of the regular calendar agenda. So Madam Clerk, item for speakers.
We do, we have four, so they'll each get three minutes still. The first is Molly Lauffer, and then Josh Altieri, and then Kristi Black.
Welcome, welcome Speaker Lauffer.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening, Mayor Ashcroft, Vice Mayor Pryor, and members of the Alameda City Council. My name is Molly Lauffer, and I've been a resident of Alameda for over six years. I have three young daughters, one of whom attends an Alameda public school. The other two are too young, but they will soon. On Monday, September first, I was walking down my street on the twenty-six hundred block of Otis Drive with my children when I saw a swastika painted on the traffic light pole at the corner of Otis and Broadway. I immediately submitted a see, click, fix ticket for general public graffiti and a non-emergency report to the Alameda Police Department, as this type of public graffiti is considered hate speech. I also notified the president of Temple Israel, the local synagogue here on the island, of which my family is a member. APD acknowledged the report and noted that an officer was dishpapped to record the issue. They actually called me the next day. And see, click, fix also acknowledged the report the next business day and noted that the request was now a work order and assigned to staff. Every day since September first, I've walked past this traffic pole, and I have yet to see the hateful graffiti covered up. I am here tonight, as it has been over two weeks since the original acknowledgement, and no one from Public Works has taken action. While I feel fortunate that my three Jewish daughters are too young to recognize this symbol and what it represents from her family's past, I can't help but wonder why this specific instance has been ignored or seemingly deprioritized by a city who publicly states that everyone belongs here. Since October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, it has not been easy to always be publicly Jewish in Alameda. From wearing a Magen David to attending public holiday gatherings to walking my children into the synagogue past our private security. So you can imagine that I can't help but personally feel a little less welcome every time I see this graffiti. I am asking the city to please escalate the repainting of this traffic pole. I've submitted my comments via email prior to the meeting, and you are free to follow up with me directly with any questions. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Josh Altieri.
Welcome, Speaker Altieri.
How you doing? My name's Josh Altieri. I'm the Community Relations Manager at the Housing Authority, the city of Alameda. I just want to share a couple of updates regarding the Housing Authority. We're hosting a grand opening for North Housing next Thursday, September twenty-fifth, from three PM to five PM. We'll have speakers from various AHA partners, and we'll also have an opportunity to tour both buildings, Lannett Corner and Estuary One. We'll have light refreshments, food will be served. And so we hope you can join us in celebrating the first hundred and nine affordable homes at North Housing that house seniors, previously unhoused, and veterans. For more information, go to northhousing.live. Second update is that we're also hosting a series of community meetings for a development project called The Poplar. We've hosted two community meetings so far. At each meeting, we've had over forty attendees, and we've reviewed the property site development process and building design. The process has been very informative and collaborative for both Housing Authority staff as well as the attendees. And the next meeting will take place on October first at Edison Elementary School. And for the entire meeting schedule, there'll be a total of five meetings. For the entire meeting schedule, you can go to our website, alamedahsg.org, to see the future dates and times. And then along those same lines, we're also hosting a series of town hall meetings at Housing Authority-owned properties. We are conducting these meetings also with our property management provider, FPI Management. And it's really an opportunity to engage residents regarding policies, programming, available resources, and also to receive direct feedback on property operations, how we can enhance their experience, their living situation, make them feel safe and welcome. Again, that's been a great process for us as well. And then lastly, the Housing Authority will be hosting a ribbon cutting next Monday, and it's for the city's first building-powered public curbside electric vehicle charger. This charger is designed for residents that don't have driveways or garages, and it avoids the heavy infrastructure typically required for curbside chargers. So major thanks to the city, Alameda Municipal Power, and It's Electric for their commitment and partnership in getting this installation completed, and hope you can join us next Monday. I believe it starts at eleven AM at Everett Commons. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Altieri. Next speaker.
Kristi Black.
Welcome, Speaker Black.
Good evening. I have two topics that I want to speak to. The first is related to the cleanup efforts at Alameda High School. I had written to the mayor and vice mayor in late August, raising concerns about the contamination at Alameda High School. To be clear, I do trust that the remediation will be managed correctly at the site. But in that email, I expressed my concerns to the city that hexavalent chromium was found at Alameda High School, that this chemical can migrate significantly, persist in groundwater, and cause serious health problems. I was curious in my email about whether any efforts were being made to determine the source and extent of the contamination. The city promptly responded to my email, reached out to the County Department of Environmental Health, and indicated that the county will provide a thorough response to that inquiry after the project comment period ends on September twenty-second. So I'm commenting today because September twenty-second is coming up, and I really want to request that the city be an advocate for its residents in tracking down whether this contamination extends beyond the high school site. And just for context, hexavalent chromium is the chemical at the center of the Aaron Brockovich and Hinckley movie. So it's a real problem, and I think it's within the city's interest to protect its residents and make sure residents around the high school aren't also affected by that contamination. My second item is about an experience I had at a hardware store in Oakland this past weekend. I was browsing the garden center, and I heard this high-pitched, awful animal scream, and I found where it was coming from, and it was very sadly a rat that had been stuck in a glue trap. And these glue traps are these squares that have this sticky substance that catch not only pests, but anything else in its track. I won't forget that sound, and I emailed the owner, and I talked to the customer service representative, asking them not to use that anymore. So how is this relevant to Alameda? Coincidentally, the city of San Francisco Commission of Animal Control and Welfare recently voted to recommend a citywide ban on glue traps. This is a ban that Wild Care, our regional wildlife rescue program up in Marin, supports in the past two years. They said they've treated over fifty victims of glue traps. And according to a recent Facebook post they made, that includes songbirds, lizard, squirrels, opossum, and a California quail. Their Director of Communications said glue traps are one of the most heart-wrenching and preventable reasons for patients to be admitted to Wild Care's Wildlife Hospital. The suffering caused by these devices cannot be overstated. So apparently several countries have banned glue traps. San Francisco, if they pass it, would be the third, and California to do so. So I'm encouraging you to perhaps consider following San Francisco's lead in banning them here. I know it might be hard to enforce, but at least it would raise some awareness that there are more humane methods of pest control. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Mitchell Ball.
Welcome, Speaker Ball. Welcome.
Hello. With construction on the Webster and Posey Tube about to begin, Alameda will likely be facing high-traffic congestion in the next few years before the Oakland-Alameda Access Project finishes. I work in between these two tunnels and often pass by the congestion that already exists when I bike to and from work. The city has made meaningful progress in enabling people to use other modes of transportation in recent years, from bike lanes to the water taxi, and vehicle miles traveled are reducing. However, there are still ways that people are being artificially incentivized to use cars, and the city can end these incentives by simply enabling enforcement of a thirty-year-old California state law. For those of you who don't know, parking cash-out law has been on the books since nineteen ninety-two, but often goes unenforced, like it is here in Alameda. The intent of this law is to prevent employers from subsidizing car use more than they subsidize any other modes of transportation. This law requires qualifying companies to offer employees who don't drive the ability to cash out their parking space and receive cash or alternative transit subsidies instead, equivalent to the cost of the parking space. This could be huge for individuals who can't afford to own cars, or families who can't afford to own multiple cars. Additionally, for those who currently drive to work but could use other modes, this could be a great incentive to stop contributing to rush hour congestion and road maintenance costs. These people deserve to be properly compensated for the true economic consequences of their decision. Alameda just needs to do two things to enforce this law. Firstly, adopt a financial penalty for businesses that do not comply with the state law. The state law explicitly grants cities the power to do this. Secondly, change zoning to require that new commercial leases have their parking unbundled and listed as a separate adjustable line item in the lease. This makes calculation of the cost of parking easy and allows businesses to save money by reducing their parking footprint. Additionally, it also benefits commercial lessors, as it allows them to identify land unclaimed by lessees that is prime for infill development in the form of new jobs, homes, and property tax revenue. As you are well aware, we have huge swaths of asphalt all over Alameda. Much of this goes unparked and is, for all intents and purposes, vacant land, but it just hasn't been formally recognized as such. Unbundling parking is not a radical policy and is, in fact, already required of all new residential development in most of California. Alameda can go farther by requiring that all commercial and residential leases in Alameda, on development both new and old, offer only unbundled parking. It's not fair that tenants and employees who don't and can't drive are made to pay for parking that they don't use and don't want. It's a distortion of the market that encourages speculation of effectively vacant land. Unbundling parking and enforcement of parking cash-out law reduces car congestion, protects the environment, encourages new development during a housing crisis, doesn't have any high construction costs, and instead actually increases tax revenue and provides financial relief to the city's road maintenance budget, as well as Alamitos who need it most, and so should be implemented here in Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
That was our last speaker.
That was our last speaker. Okay, so with that, we will close oral communication, non-agenda items, and we will move on to the regular consent calendar. And these are items that are routine, approved by one motion unless council members remove items for discussion. Removed items will be called after the regular agenda items are completed. Council members may speak for up to three minutes on consent calendar items. So, back to my questions. Does council want to pull any items on the regular consent calendar? No pull. Okay, and, oh yeah, and you don't have to remove an item to vote no. And so, but if you would like to ask a question or make comments, you can do that. Next, Councilmember Jensen.
I'd like to ask a question about five J, the rejection of the Safe Routes to School project bids.
Okay, Madam City Manager, who would you like to come up to answer those questions?
I assume there's someone online, is Scott or?
Yes.
Is he online now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. We are bringing.
Joining as a panelist.
City manager, city, no, she's here, the city engineer, hello. That's not him wearing the long white gown.
He's here, but we need to put him up on the screen for.
Okay. Can we get him up on the screen?
Yeah.
I am here now, Madam Mayor.
Hi, welcome. All right, so, hi, there is our city engineer, Scott Wixstrom. So, Councilmember Jensen, did you want to restate your question for the city engineer?
Thank you. I was looking at the recommendation to reject all bids for the Safe Routes to School project, and I just wanted to get a little bit more information about the schedule, the future, and what this means to proceeding with these projects.
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Jensen. So once again, Scott Wixstrom, city engineer. This item, when we went out to bid, we would say we considered it a failed bid, where we only received one bid. That's not been characteristic of what we've been seeing recently with a lot of our bids, where we've seen seven, eight or so contractors bid on. So it was a little bit of a surprise. And so that's, and the value came back high above what our budget is, and that was hence our recommendation to reject this bid. So what we're planning to do is to basically break the project up into two pieces. The first piece is what we're going to expedite and use the grant funds, which have an expiration date of December of this year, to advance. And that really is the striping improvements associated with the project. And we advance that component first, because we believe it has the biggest safety impact for the students, you know, for the various schools that will be affected here. The other big component of the project really was a lot of concrete work associated with curb ramps. And while that's important, it's important from an accessibility standpoint, it doesn't quite have the same, I'll say, immediate degree of safety improvement. So we will fall back and we'll capture those curb ramp and other concrete improvements with a subsequent project sometime in the next year.
Thank you. That is great information, and I just, my last question is whether you're, how optimistic are you that we'll get the striping bid at the estimate that we anticipate, or that we have out there?
Confident. We do have an on-call contract with a striper to provide maintenance services, and so we do have kind of, you know, pre-negotiated prices, and we're basically crafting the project to fit within our budget. And we've worked with our contractor regularly, so that we believe they should be able to expedite this work and get it done before the December timeframe.
Well, that sounds like a great approach. Thank you so much. That's my question.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is it on the same topic? Okay, Vice Mayor Pryor?
Hi, yes, that was, I was also going to ask a question about five J. So thank you, Councilmember, because you asked some questions I was going to ask. I was also wondering, now that you explained that it's going to, the original project is going to be broken up into two pieces, what is the, maybe ETA for getting another bid for the curb ramps?
The concrete work, we will likely set that out early next year. Now, we don't have a date, and I'll be honest with the council, we've got a lot of things moving on with a lot of large projects that are happening, so we're going to try to squeeze this in, but the game plan is to get this done next year.
And how many, how many, pretend we had enough money today, how many curbs would be fixed or adjusted or?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I believe it's on the order of six to eight curb ramps. Some of them are minor improvements, where we're just upgrading the truncated domes that are right at the bottom of the ramp. Some cases, I know we're just trimming off a one-inch lift that exists between the edge of the ramp and the concrete gutter. And other ones, we are fully reconstructing the curb ramp. So we have a variety of them that, a variety of deficiencies. I will say, as we rank curb ramps, we typically look at barriers, a vertical curb as the most severe. And then we look at, and we have a ranking system based on scoring points of variety of things, between a hard barrier, then not having any of the components, or having. of things, between a hard barrier, then not having any of the components or having improper slopes. None of the ramps that we're fixing have barriers or are in really poor condition. They're all in moderate condition. But because of their proximity to school, we are looking to improve them to make sure that they're fully upgraded and compliant with the current accessibility requirements.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add a question. Do you have any idea, maybe from talking to other city engineers or others in your field, why we only got the one bid?
I don't really know for sure. We suspect a couple of different things. First one being, this is, it was intended to be a relatively small project, yet we, and this is our mistake and we can learn from it, included two different types of contracts, right? You have a signing and striping contract, and you have a concrete contract, right? So what it required is that a general contractor that has a B license basically would have to bid on it, whereas some specialty subs, if we would have broken them up separately, you could have had a specialty sub for concrete bid on one, and a specialty sub for striping bid on the other. That's one consideration. The other one is that there's a, and I might not quite stay this exactly correct, but I believe there's a small local business requirement that Alameda CTC has with the grant that's associated with this project. We reached out to a couple of contractors that we worked with recently that have done this type of small project, and they were unfortunately unable to meet those requirements. So that, sometimes when you do have grants, they do have requirements, and sometimes that also serves to limit participation as well.
Lots of good information there. Thank you so much. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I noticed, apologies for not bringing this up earlier, but I noticed that there's another item on here that's related on the consent calendar regarding curb ramps. Should I wait to ask?
Let's finish out this one really quickly, if we could, and then I'll get back to you. Does anybody else have any questions about item five? This is...
J.
J. Okay. All right. Don't go away. Mr. Wixstrom, what item are we talking about now?
It's item five, the CDBG, item 5L, Adoption Resolution Amending the CDBG Budget by, for Curb Ramp Improvement Project. And so my question, since this is another contract that we will, I, well, let me ask the question. Will we be putting this contract out to a contractor, this out to a contractor to, for curb ramp improvements or installation?
And City Manager, do you want to...
And our intent...
And Mr., oh, well, go ahead, Mr. Wixstrom.
Apologies.
No, no, you go, please.
Sorry. Yes, we will put this out for a bid. The intention, as it is less than $200,000, is that we will utilize the process known as the California Uniform Cost Accounting Method, which allows projects that are bid at less than $200,000 to be approved by the city manager. Now, this is, strictly speaking, only a concrete project, and so we expect that we would have received multiple bids from qualified concrete contractors.
So that, thank you. That was, the mayor's comment earlier was about why we weren't getting bids for these Safe Routes to School contract, and so that was my question, whether, how this differs and whether these two contracts could be bundled. But I guess you've answered my question, because this is a different type of construction, correct?
And different funding sources, too, I believe. Right. And City Manager, did you want to, the city engineer covered it all, yeah. Thank you so much. Does anybody else have any questions for the city engineer on this item? Or any item? Always good to see you. All right, do we have, don't go away yet, do we have any council questions on any of the rest of the consent calendar? Vice Mayor Pryor.
Yes. So we had, somebody had written in about 5D, and they had asked questions, and their answers were given through email, but I just wanted, I guess, for the record, to discuss that. Or not discuss it, but to have a city attorney or Lonnie.
Well, whomever, I was going to say, whoever would like to go. The city manager sits on the Public Utilities Board, but the city attorney is the city attorney. So why don't we start with you, Mr. Shen?
I was actually going to ask Madam Clerk to please promote Special Counsel Lonnie Eldridge, who prepared the supplemental memo and is prepared to answer your questions.
We'll put him up on the screen.
Thank you. This is like old times, right? The city clerk?
Yes, it is. And also, Ellen, I put Ellen, Mr. Harbottle as well.
Oh, Mr. Harbottle's on, too. Great.
Yep, so they're both. Okay, we'll put them up on the screen.
We can put them both on the screen at the same time, right?
Yes.
Oh, and the general manager's here, too.
I was going to say, but we're not going to put him up on the screen, because he's right here, there he is, in front of us. Hello.
Hi, everybody, council members.
Hello. Do you want to introduce yourself, before you speak, each of you, just introduce yourself for the public, so they know who you are. But welcome.
Sure, I'm Lonnie Eldridge, Special Counsel for City Attorney's Office, working on behalf of AMP and for AMP. And I should say, there was a Citizens Task Force series of questions, to which some of those are, let's call them business questions, that maybe Mr. Harbottle can answer. And as far as the SEQA question, one of the questions from the task force was, hey, this is exempt, you know, do we agree with that assertion? So what we did was, we just further explained that. I should note, for the council and for the mayor, that it's not necessary to, in most cases, to go into all the rationales for all the exemptions and all the findings under SEQA. But we found it a useful exercise, and we thought, you know, everyone would benefit from having that. So basically, this battery storage system would be built in Rancho Cucamonga. So the County of San Bernardino, as well as City of Rancho Cucamonga, are the lead agencies. And so if there's SEQA for breaking ground, you know, species and all that, that's going to happen down there in San Bernardino County. What we're doing is taking power through a joint powers agreement with the Northern California Power Agency. And so for all the reasons set forth in our supplemental memo, and there's a lot of them, SEQA provides several reasons why this council doesn't have to make any findings. In other words, that your action to, let's say you approve this battery storage energy agreement, you won't have to do SEQA. So that's, in a nutshell, that's what the supplemental is. Finally, I'll note that not having to do SEQA doesn't mean that the council can't consider, you know, the environmental aspects of any action that it's going to do. SEQA is a procedural thing for which we have exemptions. This project does have environmental, you know, it's good for the environment, it's supporting AMP's green power, so I'll just say that.
Thank you for that. Anything further? Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'm just going to read a question that they had, because I thought it was an interesting question, and I, so they asked, "The power supply under consideration is not expected to be available until 2029, so why the urgency for signing the agreements?"
Maybe Alan can handle that one.
I'd say, who best should answer it?
That's Alan Harbottle.
Ah, okay, welcome, Mr. Harbottle. Do you want to introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Alan Harbottle, Supervisor of Energy Resources at AMP. You know, our group has been working with NCPA and the other, the seven other city participant members that are part of this project moving forward. It's quite a large project, you know, over 320 megawatts. We represent a small 10-megawatt share, but, you know, these days with large projects, there are long lead times in getting everything constructed. And so, really, the first step in construction is getting the, you know, power purchase agreements signed, and that sort of sets off their, you know, ability to finance the project. And so then they'll go through, you know, the SEQA and the supply chain, and, you know, it takes several years. So, you know, not expected to be in operation until 2029, but this isn't too far outside of normal. And, you know, as far as we're, you know, one of, one of eight members, and sort of the collection of members decided that we should have agreements in place by the end of September.
All right. Thank you. Yep, and those are my two questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from council about this item? I will just note, for the record, that I've been to Rancho Cucamonga, because I'm on the Board of Directors of League of California Cities, and currently, our board president is from, I think she's a council member from Rancho Cucamonga. But when we were down there for a board meeting, the city did show us the fire department's electric fire engine. So you can see what's possible with being part of NCPA. So maybe one day, here. Anyway, thank you for the clarification on that. So then, any questions on any other consent calendar items, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, any public comment on the consent calendar?
There's none.
Seeing none, I am looking for a vote to, Councilmember Desog, was there something you want to vote no?
Oh, yeah. I will vote no on item 5N. Do I have to explain? For three reasons. It has to do with the YUPA MOU. There are three things that I didn't agree with, but, so, I'll vote no. Thank you.
Okay. That no vote on 5N, as in no, is noted for the record. With that, you want to make a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
No motion to the balance.
Well, actually, we moved the entire consent calendar, noting the no vote. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Desog, seconded by Councilmember Bowler. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Seeing none, the consent calendar is approved, and we will move on to the regular agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce item 7A?
Recommendation to review and provide input on the City of Alameda Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer LGBTQ Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amy Wildridge, Assistant City Manager, to give you this report. And so, in response, to give you context, in response to a city council referral brought by Councilmember Desog, city council directed staff to take affirmative steps toward local support for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, and queer communities here in Alameda. The LGBTQ plan that you have before you is the compilation of input from all of our executive team, the department heads from all of our departments, the Social Services, Human Relations Board, the Library Board, and the Recreation and Parks Commission. This LGBTQ action plan includes existing partnerships, programs, services, and actions that the city currently is, has taken, or is in process of implementing. It also includes opportunities that are organized by the amount of staff, time, and funding resources required for implementation. So I'll give you an overview, and we have above you, maybe if we could make that a little bit bigger, page by page? Thank you. I'll give you, I'm not going to go line by line, but I'm going to give you an overview of both. We'll start with the existing, and then move into opportunities, and then I'm seeking input, further input and direction from council. So, to put these into various buckets, one is partnerships. So, a big one is the Alameda Recreation and Parks Department partners with Alameda Pride Foundation to coordinate the annual Pride in the Park each October. This year, it's October 11th. And they also partner on the weekly Q-TAC, the Queer Teen Alameda Center drop-in, which is at the Veterans Building, every Friday night. And they also host quarterly events. They had Queer Prom with over 80 teens, and they have an upcoming Monster Mash on Halloween. So ARPD is really integral to that. It couldn't happen without them. They provide the space at no charge and assist with staffing and supplies. Q-TAC was founded, the Queer Teen Alameda Center was founded through this, also through a partnership with ACCYF, our Coalition for Children, Youth, and Families. And they played a key role in the development and meeting with teens out in the high schools and middle schools to determine what their needs were. In addition, the 2025 Mayor's Fourth of July Parade lifted up the LGBTQ community with, the mayor had Jeremy Andehusen, the founder of Alameda Pride, as grand marshal, and Alameda Pride contingent with over 200 people immediately following him. It was fabulous, yeah. Some of the actions we've taken through policy, advocacy, and trainings. We have updated pronouns in all of our various city documents, the city charter, our bargaining unit MOUs, APD, or the Police Department policies have all been updated to be gender-neutral. LGBTQ sensitivity training is also included in employee trainings, including with our Police Department. The city council also, in its legislative agenda that it adopts biannually, it includes, under the guiding principles, sexual orientation, as well as a specific legislative focus area to support human rights, services, access to health care, and protection from discrimination for people who identify as LGBTQ plus. And then we have, the city has numerous policies regarding discrimination, includes all protected classes, including LGBTQ plus, and is continuing assessing and improving those policies. We also celebrate Pride Month in a number of ways. The Alameda Free Library carries a wide range of non-traditional family and LGBTQ-themed books, as well as hosting Pride Month programming, and this year had their first successful trans mini-film fest. City council itself issues a proclamation each June for LGBTQ Pride Month, and inclusive pride flags are flown at city buildings. And this year, the IM Alameda Economic Development Campaign highlighted LGBTQ-owned businesses in June. So some, moving on to opportunities that were identified through this collaborative effort, starting with those that require minimal staff and funding. One is to add a domestic partner registry to the already-inclusive civil marriages offered by our city clerk's office. Another is to celebrate International Transgender Day of Visibility in March. That could be through a proclamation or other activities. Another is to include resources for LGBTQ individuals and families, particularly for the transgender community, on the city's website, and ensure, check and ensure that the city website search engine provides access and gets people where they need to be, and those things are easily searchable and found. And also to educate the community about LGBTQ rights and resources. Another is about demographics, to include demographics consistent across all city surveys. This is something we already do on, I would say, most city surveys. Our Communications Director, Sarah Henry, has a set template that includes sexual orientation as well as gender, and we just need to make sure we're doing that consistently across surveys, so we're collecting that data. Another is to explore collaborative opportunities with Alameda-Fide School District, particularly with the LGBTQ coordinator that is on their staff, and the LGBTQ plus roundtable, that's comprised of students and families. Another is to, about pronouns, to include, encourage including pronouns in city signatures, as well as requesting pronouns and preferred names when hiring for the city. A couple of other minimal resource required. One is to identify opportunities to partner with other East Bay cities to have a more regional impact. And when celebrating Pride Month, one of the board members brought up that we have these Heritage Month banners, and they have famous people on them, right? And are there ways we could lift up local stories and highlight local people in our community? Gender-neutral restrooms. This came up with every single group that I met with. And so one was specifically to include gender-neutral restrooms at the Aquatic Center. I'm happy to say that that is already in the plans that are in permit review right now. It includes two gender-neutral restrooms, each of them also has a shower. And I also want to add to this that each time a new restroom is installed with the city, particularly at parks, we always install single-stall, gender-neutral restrooms. So that is how we are implementing new restrooms. So that's for Estuary Park Phase Two, and has happened for a number of other park facilities. Opportunities to take a little more staff and funding resources. One is to do targeted economic development support for LGBTQ-owned businesses, and to ensure anti-bullying policies and LGBTQ sensitivity training for city programs, particular for staff working in community-facing programs, such as library and recreation. Gender-neutral restrooms, I'll come back to that. If we want to, it would be significant funding and staff resource to shift, to redevelop our existing restrooms into gender-neutral restrooms. However, as I've been talking to people about it, there are potential, what we could explore is a low-cost, faster way to do so by, if a restroom, multi-stall restroom has, you know, stalls for each person, we could open it up to the full public, because there still is privacy with each stall. We're starting to see this more and more Berkeley Rep. Other public places are starting to do that. There are things we need to consider, so it's something we need to assess, but it is certainly an option. Plus, I wanted to add that wherever we do have single stalls, those already have been converted to gender-neutral, although they're primarily staff-facing. So at City Hall West, we have a couple, one on the first floor, one on the second floor, that are single-stall, they're gender-neutral for staff. Lastly, there are some opportunities that we just don't quite know what the resources are. It's unknown, we haven't had a chance to quite assess it yet, or it's just a variable. One is to join lawsuits to support LGBTQ community rights when appropriate. That could be a consideration. Another is to develop a consortium with immigrant communities and other at-risk communities with the concept right that we're stronger together. And there's many communities that are currently under fire, and so... Um, and there's many communities that are currently under fire, and so how can we work And we talked about the anti-bullying policies, um, internally with our own staff that are work with the public, but what came up from the Recreation Parks Commission is, can we take it a step further and apply that requirement to organizations that, um, either rent, uh, organizations or businesses that either rent facilities, so for example, athletic organizations, um, that that rent our facilities to to play sports, um, or are in some kind of agreement doing business with the city. So we would need to assess this, but maybe it's something we can strongly encourage, maybe we can require, we would need to look into that. Um, and then lastly, also came from the Record Park Commission, ways that community volunteer leaders, such as coaches, um, can be provided or required to provide LGBTQ sensitivity training and anti-bullying trainings. Uh, so that concludes my report, and I'm happy to receive any feedback council may have.
Thank you, um, Assistant City Manager Wildridge. Um, so we start with you, Councilmember Desog, since this is a result of your council referral?
Well, thank you. Um, uh, first off, thank you very much to our staff, uh, in working with not only your own team, but also with the various commissions in getting input. Above all, what you see, um, in front of you is the fact that the City of Alameda, for many years now, has been really, uh, at the forefront and has been doing a lot already. Um, and there is much that more to be done. Um, and I think it's especially important for a city like Alameda to be very intentional in terms of, uh, protecting the, uh, rights and happiness of people who, of LGBT community. Um, but I also want to specifically say, you know, what kind of compelled me to bring this forward as a council referral, and thank you very much to my colleagues on the city council, what compelled me to bring this forward specifically is, I do believe that the transgender youth community, or transgender in general, have been under attack, and it's important for a city like Alameda to take a stand in an affirmative manner. Um, and it's important for Alameda because, you know, while we do, um, lean heavily progressive, we are still very much known as kind of a middle-of-the-road city. Um, you know, where you kind of expect, um, uh, action plans like this in maybe Berkeley or San Francisco, maybe Oakland, um, you know, for for places like Alameda, I think it really is important, uh, to be very intentional in 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 moving this forward. Um, specific things, um, that that I would definitely want to throw out is, I think years ago, uh, former city manager John Russo might have said it best, something along the lines of, if it's not measured, um, it, you you're not really, you you're not really committing to 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 doing it. So there were a lot of bullet points in with regard to the the things that we're doing already in an existing manner, but staff perhaps might come up with, what are, of the existing things that that we're doing, what are the five things, or whatever the right number is, that that we want to begin to track? Um, and then perhaps provide, um, uh, an annual report as to, you know, what kind of data and trends that that we're seeing. Um, and actually, a plan like this is is a great way to tie together a lot of the things that we're already doing, um, but also to kind of expand into new areas. Um, I think the third bullet point that you saw there had to do with education, and one of the things that I would definitely like, you know, to see, um, uh, action or or plans is, and I might have mentioned this before, is putting in all of our parks some kind of plaque, maybe eleven by seventeen, um, statement that's that is very specific to say that that the City of Alameda is a welcoming community to, you know, people of all races, cultures, genders, um, but but most especially to specifically, um, call out, uh, transgender individuals, transgender girls, transgender boys, so that when youth especially, or or even, you know, adults who are might maybe playing softball at at Lower Washington Park, when they see, you know, that kind of a plaque at at the different parks, they see that this city, you know, is is committed to that, and to the extent that, you know, that that we we will put it out there. Um, and I think that's a form of of education, so that people begin to understand that, you know, all of the fears, um, that generations of of Americans have had, um, uh, have had about transgender persons, fears generated through movies like From Hollywood, um, if you think about it, um, uh, what was that, um, Norman Bates, um, Psycho, um, or if you think about, uh, movies like Silence of the Lamb, uh, the 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 protagonist, it's all about, you know, fearing, you know, people, um, granted, those specific stories were, you you did want to, you know, the the characters, but but in the in the movies, but the larger message, though, was was to be afraid of of transgender people as as different, and something to be, um, concerned about. But I think, you know, we can begin to set a new narrative, and and I think in having an action plan that that's intentional, um, uh, you know, I I think, you know, it's something that maybe other cities will want want to see, you know, what Alameda is doing in this regard. So I, um, I appreciate the the information that was put together. Um, there are some things that I did send, um, to our staff with regard to, um, things that I do want to see. Um, and so I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Desog. Vice Mayor, did you have your hand up?
Oh, yeah, I I I had, uh, sorry, comment, sorry. Um, so I just want to express my thanks to Councilmember Desog for this referral and for your comments just now. Um, and I want to thank staff for, uh, this robust report, uh, your hard work and dedication to this endeavor has been incredible. Um, uh, there are things, um, sorry, I'm just going to read from here. Okay, so I think it's great that the City of Alameda is taking deliberate actions to support our LGBTQ plus community, especially at a time where civil rights are being eroded. Um, I believe that we must be vigilant in our commitment to see the humanity in one another, and to also take the time to celebrate being our most authentic self. Um, the ideas that I liked were the sensitivity training, I think it's a great idea. Um, I also liked what Councilmember Desog said about tracking da- data. Um, uh, what comes to mind to me is the, um, the rates, um, of mental health issues and suicide rates for, uh, youth, LGBTQ plus youth. So, um, I really do like the, um, that is something I think that is extremely important. It's probably my my biggest concern in this area. Um, and, um, and that's it. Thanks again.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Jensen, did you want to comment?
Um, give me just a minute.
Sure, Councilmember Bowler?
Uh, may I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, why don't use your microphone?
Does this, do the city, um, currently have a liaison or an office or any, for this type of concern? Because I know that that's sometimes considered a best practice in some other communities.
We don't at this point, that's, we we could identify whether it's, we could figure that out, whether I imagine it'd be their city manager's office or Housing Human Services.
Yeah, because it seems like the concept is that if there's a point person who has that responsibility, um, it it puts the center of attention on that, you know, concern at all times, really, but also, you know, throughout the year, rather than some particular project. So that might be something to consider. Um, what about, do we have, I'm sure, in line with our legislative agenda, I mean, it's very clear that in our legislative agenda, we have, um, you know, equity concerns is are really important. Uh, is there something specific, though, that Alameda is doing in the in the category of nondiscrimination ordinances or could be doing?
Under the legislative agenda?
Right, looking at things like employment, housing, public services, especially as it relates to contractors and things that work with the city, too.
Um, I can't think of something off the top of my head. I I know in terms of housing, we 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 comply with fair housing, you know, fair housing law, um, and certainly with our employment, we 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 do the same in terms of fair employment. Um, but I, we could do more research on that, absolutely, on on what we can do in regards to nondiscrimination ordinances and weaving that through.
Um, could I ask the city attorney to weigh in on this, too? Please?
Yes, um, Councilmember Bowler, the council did adopt, uh, our own set of local fair housing laws back in, I think, 2019, and, um, we actively enforce that set of fair housing laws, and one of the protections it provides is, you know, in this category, along with, you know, a numerable number of protected class categories. Um, that is one thing I wanted to add, and of course, state law is fairly comprehensive on this topic and covers a wide range of issues, both unemployment and housing.
And and finally, in terms of community organizations, I know we, you know, we're there for the launch of Q-TAC and some exciting things in terms of partnerships, but is there more that could be done in terms of, uh, partnering with our nonprofit community in this area?
Yeah, I think, you know, our nonprofit, we have such an incredibly strong nonprofit network here in Alameda. Um, we're already, as mentioned, already working with Alameda Pride, um, and can continue to support and coordinate with them. There's also Alameda Family Services, um, that provides, we help fund their work, uh, to provide mental health in the schools. Um, and so I think we can, continuing to do that, expanding where we can, uh, it's currently funded by CDBG Funds. Um, and I think, you know, anything we can do to support the nonprofits, whether it's through training or anything else, um, you know, I think there's more work we can do to find out what they're already doing to support the LGBTQ communities in in Alameda, and I think by having those conversations, that's where we can start to lift up where the opportunities are to collaborate.
And with Alameda Pride, you mentioned, which is important, was there a lot of input for this action plan with them? Was there an opportunity?
It's a great point, and I, that was a bit of a miss, and I apologize. I think one thing I'd like to do with this, was we were trying to bring it back, and 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 really, it should be the start of a conversation, um, and bringing in the teens at Q-TAC, and bringing in Alameda Pride, and and bringing more people to the conversation, bringing in LGBTQ Roundtable at the school district, and and to to continue the conversation of where the community, um, wants to see support.
Thank you.
I just want to chime in before we go to Councilmember Jensen. Assistant City Manager Wildridge, you did a ton of work on this, and you, I felt like every time we were meeting about something, you had to leave because that evening you were presenting to this, that, or the other commission. So there is always more work we can do, and, um, I think we're off to a very strong sort of start, so please don't sell yourself short. You've you've gotten us off to a really good beginning. Onto you, Councilmember Jensen.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I couldn't agree more. We are off to, we, even before this update, we were off to a good start, and, um, I I think, thank you, Assistant Manager Wildridge, and thanks to Councilmember Desog and all staff for bringing this item forward and for the thoughtful ideas about improving the LGBTQ plus programs and outreach we have. Uh, I feel very strongly that Alameda can and should support all residents, inclusive of all sexual orientations and gender expressions, a commitment that I demonstrated fifteen years ago, when as a school board member, I led the AUSD to establish the nation's first elementary school curriculum to teach students about gay families and reduce the bullying of gay students, teachers, parents, and allies. And I'll always be proud of Lesson Nine and of Alameda Unified for taking that huge step. I agree with Councilmember Desog also that Alameda should be intentional in protecting the rights of LGBTQ plus residents, especially our youth. All of the recommendations from staff and the the the, um, things that we've done so far, the 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 teen center is just a huge improvement and and support for this community. This was recently, um, all of the recommendations from staff will do that, but I think, I'm going to go, I think we can actually be more expressive and, um, even more intentional in showing the community that everyone belongs here. Because what we're seeing across this country are actions to cancel the contributions and sacrifices of LGBTQ plus Americans, and not only those communities. This was recently demonstrated, just a few weeks ago, when the City of Orlando painted over a rainbow flag crosswalk at the site of a mass shooting at a gay nightclub. That's why I am proposing that the action plan include a visual expression of Alameda's support for, uh, LGBTQ plus, especially our students and our youth, but also all of our community, which is shown on the screen here. Thank you, Laura.
Thanks, Councilmember Jensen. I I think that's lovely, and also, I know the city engineer has feelings about colored paint and crosswalks, but I use whatever support I can get to get those colors in there. But not only is it a lovely expression of support for this issue, but it also is a really high-visibility crosswalk. So, um, I know, Scott, I can see you glaring at me, but it's, yeah, let's let's explore this with Public Works if we could. Um, so I just want to close by saying, um, thank you again so much for bringing this to our attention, for working with all the different, um, boards and commissions in the city that you you met with, and I do think, timing-wise, well, it's always the right time to recognize people and allow, I liked what the vice mayor said about allowing people to the to fully express who they are, and the full and free expression of themselves, and, but especially now, when we are seeing and hearing from the highest echelons of government, some very regrettable things, and I think especially, you know, we're adults, and we've been through a lot and seen a lot, and you kind of learn how to filter things, but just picture yourself as a young person, um, navigating these times. It's very, um, it's very distressing, it's very stressful, and so I think whatever we can do as a city to, um, to stand up and say, this is who we are, and again, when we say, everyone belongs here, we mean, everyone belongs here. Sometimes we need to work on things, as we heard on a, you know, a public comment, we appreciate people bringing that to our attention, but I, too, am concerned with the statistics that show the high rate of, um, suicide and suicidal ideation among young people, um, who are transgender, who are LGBTQ plus, and so, and it was, um, such a lovely celebration when the Q-TAC was opened, and, um, the, um, it's just wonderful that finally teens, and also pre-teens, because it's it's middle school, they divide it by times, but middle school and high school students, and it was a treat to be riding behind the, um, Alameda Pride contingent with our our grand marshal, and it was such a big contingent that I just kept riding my e-bike around in circles, and, um, but just, just, I love just seeing how people were so excited to be out there, and you know what? The crowds all along the parade route loved it, too, because, like I said, I was right behind that entry. So, um, this is, so what we're looking for, um, is to review and provide input on the City of Alameda LGBTQ plus action plan. Um, I think we've done all of that, and and come back to us anytime with anything further. Councilmember Desog?
Um, Madam Mayor, if I may finish, um, with a, um, reading something, I I thought we got a great email from a good number of people, but I do want to, uh, read one by, um, Alameda Planning Board Member, Andy Wang.
Wang.
Wang, uh, who, among other things, uh, he he eloquently stated the following, "Sometimes it's necessary to explicitly invite in order not to implicitly exclude, and to make sure everyone in our community feels seen, heard, and valued." So I really appreciated, um, that.
Lovely. Thank you for sharing that, and thank you, Planning Board Member Wang. Um, one of my appointees, I might add, but anyway, um, yes, um, thank you again. Thank you all, great suggestions, and, um, thank you especially, Assistant City Manager Wildridge. All right, um, moving on, we go to seven B. Um, Madam Clerk, would you introduce that item for us, and staff, come on up and get ready to present?
Introduction of Ordinance Authorizing the City Manager to Exude a Third Amendment to the Lease with the United States Navy for 3,895 square feet of office space in City Hall West at Alameda Point. This section is categorically exempt from further environmental review pursuant to Segal Guidelines, Section 15301, Existing Facilities, and 15061B3, Common Sense.
Welcome, and go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good evening, Mayor Azie Ashcraft, and, uh, members of council. My name is Alexis Krieg, and I am, uh, Management Analyst in the Base Reuse and Economic Development Department. Um, the Navy retained office space at City Hall West during the conveyance process under this lease, and they have agreed to relinquish one office for, uh, Public Works, and the lease amendment that we are asking you to, uh, consider memorializes that reduction in office space.
All right.
I'm here if you have questions.
That was definitely short and sweet, we like that. Um, as City Council, any clarifying questions about this item? Madam Clerk, any public comment?
None.
City Council, anybody want to make a motion?
I move that we approve.
All right, and so it's been moved by Vice Mayor Pryor to, and this is introduction of the ordinance, and so it'll come back for a second reading, correct? All right, who's going to second? Councilmember Bowler, because I'm looking at you, thank you for seconding. All right, um, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Seeing none, that Aye. Any opposed, any extensions? Seeing then, that may be a record for length of time. We'll check it out later with the clerk's office. Thank you so much. Nice to see you. All right, well, that concludes the regular agenda. And we go next to City Manager Communications, City Manager Jenna.
Great. Thank you so much. This Thursday, September 18th, is the annual Autumn Job Fair at the South Shore Center, where we have over 20 local businesses that are seeking to fill more than 100 positions. And then we have a lot happening this weekend. On Saturday morning, there's an annual statewide coastal cleanup at Crown Beach. Sunday morning is the Island Running Festival at Alameda Point and the Blues Brews and Barbecue Festival at Washington Park in the afternoon. So just as everyone's out there and enjoying, just make the gorgeous weather, just make sure you are, take extra caution if you have to drive. Also, after taking places, also taking place this weekend in San Francisco at Pier 80 is the Portola Music Festival. Like last year, event organizers have taken additional steps to mitigate the noise and vibrations we hear and feel in Alameda. And if you do have a complaint, please call the Portola hotline at 877-324-8151, and they will work to address the issue in real time. Only call the Alameda Police Department for local emergencies. And then next Thursday, the city is hosting a community open house about traffic safety at the Gibbons High Fernside intersection. And it's going to be here at City Hall. We'll have the presentation in the chambers, and then we'll have the open house down on the second floor lobby. And then next Saturday, September 27th, is the first ever Alameda Sea Level Rise Planning Fair. So join us at the REAP Climate Center and explore sea level rise concepts for the development of the Alameda Shoreline Adaptation Plan. And there's more information on all of this on our website.
Thank you. And I might just add two other events. Tomorrow night at the library, I think starting at 7 o'clock, this is the 50th anniversary of the Friends of the Alameda Free Library. And they're hosting a movie called Free for All, which is about libraries that are free for all. It could be interpreted different ways. But if it's free, the film is also free. So that's tomorrow evening. And then just before the Sea Level Rise event is the Bike for the Parks that is, supports our parks, the Friends of the Parks sponsored. It's over at Bay Farm Island. Go around Bay Farm, Harbor Bay. But I am confident that after that, I can still ride across the island to the REAP Climate Center. So thank you for that. And oral communication on agenda items, Madam Clerk?
None.
None for that. We don't have any council referrals this evening. So why don't we go to Council Communications, starting with you, Councilmember Desog?
About 10 days ago or so was it?
Yes, as well as I said.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor and myself, Pryor, had attended the joint city council Alameda Unified School District.
You're the liaison?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't go.
Oh. Oh, it was B and Greg. Oh, okay. Senior moment. Sorry about that.
I can see how you would mistake one for the other.
Actually, I'm getting mixed up with AC Transit, I think. So Councilmember Bowler and myself had attended the city council joint meeting with the Alameda Unified School District. And they gave a great presentation on all the projects that they're doing across Alameda. It was wonderful.
AUSD. Okay, great. Thank you for that. Councilmember Bowler, in fact, I walked by the room and saw the two of you, so I can vouch for it. Councilmember Bowler, what have you got?
Well, that event, that meeting, productive, good to hear about everything the school district is up to, which is a lot. Also, two ribbon cuttings. One was Improv Central for, sorry, Improv Central for September 12, which is a great new business on Central that is really a great creative space for people to really improve their lives, go in new directions. It was a life changing experience that led the founder to the mission to create that. So I encourage everyone to check out that space. Also, I was with the mayor at the ribbon cutting for Park Street Station on Saturday, on Saturday the 13th. And many Alamadans are very excited about the new businesses there on the corner of Park Street and San Jose and the energy and all the families that are out and the special events and whatnot that will take place there, including live music. So good to see some new businesses in town.
For sure. Vice Mayor Pryor?
Well, I went to the Wellness Council. Brunch luncheon?
Welfare Council.
Oh, welfare, sorry.
Right?
It's what it was. Yep.
They promote wellness.
I was, yeah. Anyway, I thought that was amazing, especially to hear the stories about taking care of immigrant families to just really increase the odds of their success and their sense of belonging. It was, it was, it was a lovely event, and it was so meaningful. And I think that's it. Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen.
Okay, I'll take everyone's time that they didn't take. On Saturday, October 30th, I joined Supervisor Lena Tam and Orange County Congressman Dave Lynn to welcome about 300 participants to the USS Hornet to commemorate the partnership between the US and China that led to the end of World War II. And it was really fascinating. I learned a lot at that, at that presentation. I also with Vice Mayor Pryor, the Alameda Welfare Council, which was established 96 years ago. And they raised more than $1 million for local nonprofit. So I was happy to be able to buy a few things and contribute to that, not very much, but a little bit, to their, when attending the annual summer fair at the Officers Club. This past Friday, the 12th, I welcomed the newest Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class and joined them on a terrific bus tour that was narrated by Dennis Evenovsky and Alameda's own Abby Thorne Lyman. And I've been on the council and lived here for a long time, and I learned a lot on that tour. Earlier this afternoon, Alameda Police Department welcomed two new officers. And they were both women who had strong ties to the city. So that was really exciting. And it's always great to see recognition of staff. And there was some other recognition of community members that was very special as well. And as we discussed earlier this evening, Alameda, making Alameda a welcoming place for all means not just responding when something happens, but it also means being intentional. And as the Tony, our Councilmember Desog mentioned, it means inviting participation. So I'll invite everyone, please come on Saturday, October 11th. Put it on your calendar and come to Chachanjo for Pride in the Park in Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you. And so since our last council meeting on September 2nd, on September 4th, I was part of a virtual webinar for the Mayor's Institute for Pedestrian Safety, which I'm participating in this, this year, one of 12 mayors across the country. And this topic was on enforcement. Every time we meet, there's a different topic. And so I can invite two staff members. And so Alameda Police Department Captain Matt McMullin and then from the Transportation Department, Lisa Foster, joined me. And the, one of the speakers was actually the woman who founded the Vision Zero Network, of which we are a part. And it was great to hear from all the mayors. But I was really proud to hear from city staff. And I know I've told the city manager and the police chief how Captain McMullin shared how in Alameda, we're very data driven in our enforcement of whatever, traffic enforcement, crimes. And we have what's called a heat map that shows where these different incidents are taking place. So we focus traffic enforcement there. And he talked about how when officers pull someone over for speeding in these areas, and they start by explaining, so you were going this many miles over the posted speed limit. And you know, in this area, we've had a number of serious injury crashes. And he said, sometimes people even thank the officer. But it just, it goes to show what communication and understanding why something is happening, not just, you know, we do this because we do this. And, and it was, it was just, everyone was impressed hearing what Alameda is doing. Lisa talked about it too. The next day, Friday, September 5th, I represent the cities of Alameda County on the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. And we took a field trip to the South Bay to visit a number of transit stations and systems underway, just opened there. Now, Friday, September 5th was also the day that Bart was on a complete shutdown. But I didn't use Bart. I took the Seaplane Lagoon ferry to San Francisco, hopped in the Anjuta to the Calstran Station down past the ballpark because we were all meeting in Palo Alto at the Transit Center there and met everybody. And then we, we did a combination of bus, transit, we didn't ride Bart, but we took the train back. And it's amazing to see what is being done, the new Bart stations that are going in, in the South Bay. And it just highlights how important transit is for our region and how these millions of people throughout the region need to get where they're going. And a lot of exciting work is being done. I was also on Saturday, September 6th, at the Alameda Welfare Council luncheon with Vice Mayor Pryor and Councilmember Jensen. As you noted, great program. On September the 10th, just this last Wednesday, I attended the Alameda County Mayor's Conference Meeting, was hosted by Oakland Mayor Barbara Lee in the African American Museum and Library in downtown Oakland, which is next to Preservation Park, where some of us were there to see Danielle Mueller receive a Green Belt Alliance Award. And it was, it was fascinating to see that, to hear from the Oakland mayor and Simone Falls attended with me because Alameda is part of the homelessness working group of the Alameda County Mayors. And so we have been meeting pretty much monthly to figure out funding and how we're going to get our share of the Measure W dollars. On September 11th, before 7:00 AM, I joined firefighters at Station 1 of the Fire Department to commemorate September 11th. And a moment of silence, they lowered the flag. And we were on the Antonell Avenue side. And I looked across the street and there were a group of residents that were out there. And the firefighters at the station said, these folks come out, they're like neighbors, they come out every year to watch them lower the flag. And then on, yes, Saturday, September 13th, I was, oh, but on Friday, Thursday, September 11th, I think almost every council member here attended the Alameda County Asian Pacific American Democratic Caucus of Alameda County's annual dinner at Pacific Lighthouse. Every county supervisor attended. Four of the five council members here, many mayors from around the county, many council members, and just lots of people. Our DA Ursula Jones Dixon spoke, as did a gentleman who's Chinese and a historian. It was fascinating. And dismayed to learn the history of how we've treated and continue to treat immigrants in this country at times. And then the next day on September 12th, I was at the Metropolitan Transportation Commission meeting. We were all following with bated breath SB 63. But it got through the legislature and we're quite confident that it is on its way, just not going to be signed by the governor. And we'll talk more about that. And then, as Councilmember Bowler noted, we attended the grand opening of Park Station on Park Street. So much fun. So check it out. Thank you, everyone. We, I don't have any nominations. I'm working on it, Madam Clerk, really, next time. But tonight, we are, by the way, you're not getting a break because we go two hours and then we take a break. It's 8:16. We haven't even gone an hour and a half, which is great. So I'm going to make this brief. But I am adjourning this evening's meeting in memory of a very special woman in Alameda. Some of you might have known her. Her name was Alice Huey. And I happened to run into one of her daughters, Deanna, at the Alameda Welfare Council luncheon. And she mentioned to me that her mom had passed away at the age of 99 this past August. And Alice Huey, and her daughter, Deanna, by the way, works for ARPD. She is very instrumental in the Relay for Life every year. Alice Huey, her mom was the mother of nine children, five of whom still live in Alameda. She has eight grandchildren and one great grandchild. I am pretty sure I met her when we were working to put a library measure on the ballot. That was, we got it on the ballot in 2020. So it was even, where do the years go? I don't know. But this is so, and thank you to City Clerk Laura Weisegger, because I asked her to reach out to Deanna Huey. I hope you're listening, Deanna. But Alice Huey, since 1953, volunteered for many clubs and community organizations in Alameda, including the Alameda League of Women Voters, the Alameda Chinese Club, the Alameda Chapter of the Red Cross, the PTA Council Head Start. She was one of the founding members of the Alameda Collaborative for Children, Youth, and Their Families, or ACCYF, that our former and late supervisor, Will Matt Chan, helped start. She was active with local Brownie Troops, the Base Reuse Advisory Group, the Mayor's Committee on Base Closure, the Alameda County Registrar of Voters, and the East Bay Municipal Utility District Citizens Advisory Committee. I don't know whether those kids just raised themselves. I knew a couple of them. They were great. But that isn't all. Alice was also a founding member of the Brown Baggers. And this is a group, they brought their bag lunch to wherever they met, usually at someone's home. If you were running for local elected office, you had to pass muster with those ladies. And they were all, and it was, and Nora Murphy, and Donna Vaughn, and Lois Hannah, and Anne Muir, and so many of them who aren't here anymore. But they just contributed so much. They took civic engagement and civic participation so seriously. And they wanted and expected civic leaders who shared those aspirations. So founding member of the Brown Baggers, and she was also a member of the Friends of the Alameda Free Library. And that's how I got to first know Alice. Because before a measure actually goes on the ballot, when it's still, we're still talking and educating the public, you can get contributions from 501(c)(3)'s. And the Friends of the library wanted this new library. And they gave us a nice contribution check. But we did fundraisers. I would organize these teddy bear tees at Nora Murphy's huge home on Franklin Park. I'm not exaggerating to say that we could seat 55 people in a seating. And we did two seedings. During the day, we raised money. We did yard sales. And Alice was always there. And in 2000, in the year 2000, she was named the Citizen of the Year. Was it in Alameda or Alameda County?
Alameda.
The city of Alameda. In fact, I saw that, I think Ralph Apizado was the mayor, and he signed the, he signed the proclamation. So her daughter, Deanna, said, this is so true, that her mother lived a full life and helped to enrich the lives of all, especially her children. But it was her children and so many, I mean, it's like dropping a pebble in a pond, a pebble in a pond, and just the circles keep going out. But how one life can just make such a difference. So let's all channel our inner Alice Huey. And we will adjourn tonight's meeting in her honor and in her memory. Thank you, everyone. And go enjoy the rest of your meeting. Good work, staff. Thanks for putting this all together. Good work, council. See you all soon. All right. Good night.